I'm now calling to order the March 10 Town Council Budget Meeting. We will start the evening as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris, could you lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now go on to public comment. As we do, we have two parts. The first will be any written appeals that have come in. Paula Ray will start us there.
Yes, I have two public comments to read tonight. The first is from Jordan Burnier 19 South Ridge Road. Dear Farmington Town Council, we would like to express our support for the inclusion of the Tungusas Mead Skateboard Park remodel in the 2021-22 year budget. We are lifelong residents of Farmington and our involvement in the Farmington Skate Park dates back to a meeting at the main library in the autumn of 1998. Our friends and families joined us inside the crowded community space to show support for a public skate park. The town worked quickly to achieve this goal and in the following year, we saw the first skate park constructed at its initial location on New Britton Avenue. About one year later, the ramps were relocated to the Tungusas Mead Park. For over 20 years, we have been skating these cherished ramps. Today, we visit the park several times a week. We can attest that the space has long been overdue for repairs and updates. Since its relocation to Tungusas Mead in early 2000, skate park has not seen many improvements. Outdoor weather conditions have caused the asphalt ground to deteriorate and the seams between ramps to separate. With each rainstorm, rocks from the parking lot flood the space. What's more, some of the ledges have been rendered unusable due to neglect and vandalism. Despite the damage, skaters still use the space on a daily basis and the skate park remains a popular feature of Tungusas Mead complex. In the past two decades, Central Connecticut has seen a number of new public skate park constructions as well as skate park remodels in New Britton, Newington, and Canton. New and improved parks bring new participants and fresh enthusiasm to the sport of skateboarding. Similarly, when Farmington Skate Park was in good condition, it would see hundreds of visitors weekly. We are confident that repairs and updates to the skate park will boost participation and generate enthusiasm among beginners and experts alike. The need of safe outdoor recreational spaces of great importance in 2021 and Tungusas Mead remodel would be an excellent opportunity to renew and improve a well-worn public space. While it may be long overdue, the town's renewed support and interest in the skate park is great news. We will follow the future Town Council updates and we hope the park remodel can remain in the upcoming 2021-22 budget. Thank you for your support, Jordan Burnier and Alan Quigley. And then, secondly, last night, I read comments from Jay Tulen. What I had been given was incorrect. This is what he had wanted to have been read last night. My comments this evening are in regards to a cooperative initiative I brought to your attention recently entitled "Mayors Unite Against Anti-Semitism." It is sponsored by the American Jewish Committee, an agapiscacsee group, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. There has been a dramatic upsurge in anti-Semitic incidents and in particular would remind you that we had an incident this summer in Farmington, a webinar for Holocaust survivors sponsored by Voices of Hope. There also have been incidents in Newington and West Hartford and numerous others in Connecticut. I can provide a document with over 40 incidents that have occurred throughout the world since last summer. Incidents on social media, physical threats to individuals, and actual destruction of property. For all these reasons, it is my belief that it is a definite call to action that should be considered. I have spoken to the Director of the AJC and some of the local mayors that have signed on and it is my understanding that the porter that allows mayors and community leaders to sign on to this initiative will expire this week. So I ask for your careful consideration in this critical matter.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, now before we open up to any public comment we have, I am going to add one that we had. I was remiss in not adding it last night from Justin Burnier. This is a letter and some questions regarding the Farmington High School building project. Paul, I dropped one of these comments on your desk. Do you have that copy?
I do.
Great. Can we have that just added into the record?
Yes, that'll be put in the record.
Thank you.
For tonight's meeting.
Perfect. Okay. And Anna, do we have anyone online?
You have Matt Huckwagner.
Matt, before you go, just a reminder, please state your name, your address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes. Matt Huckwagner.
Hey, everyone. I'm Matt Huckwagner for Deepwood Road. You know, I'm here as a parent and a taxpayer to support our education budget. You know, as you all know, Farmington is known for its great schools. Parents and taxpayers continue to expect a high level of service from our schools and I ask the Town Council to continue support for our schools. A comment about the rainy day fund. You know, after the council goes through the budget and turns over every rock and sharpens every pencil and done their sort of compassionate complete review, I encourage you all to consider the use of the rainy day fund to alleviate the tax increase as well as alleviate any cuts to services or capital projects. As you all know, especially with capital projects, we continue to push those down the road and it continues to hurt our facilities. You know, if the Town Council doesn't necessarily want to go that approach, it'd be curious to hear why. Are we concerned about the bond rating agencies? I know we're trying to do our high school project, so I get that, but I'm not sure anyone would argue that the use of the rainy day fund in this climate, in this pandemic, would be something that you couldn't argue about. Again, you know, I look forward to watching these meetings. You know, the last one, just about the meetings in general, you know, I think Zoom is here to stay and the technology is here to stay. So I hope as we just move forward with public meetings and we're back to sort of normal times where people can be in person, that the council and the rest of the public meetings can continue to use Zoom. I hope it's still in the budget. I can't imagine it's a major expense, but you know, from a parent perspective, the engagement from the town has certainly been increased. Just from a PTO perspective, the parent engagement at PTO meetings has doubled this year because everyone can kind of do it from their house and be engaged and watch the meeting. So I hope that's something that the council considers going forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anna?
Emily Colini is next.
Emily, you're up.
Hi, how are you? I think I just unmuted myself twice, which is surely enough.
Third time's the charm. You're good.
I have comments for myself and then I'm also going to, with the permission of the council, read a comment from Megan Nowjucke at Five Trump Lane who was not able to join us today. So her comment is, this is Megan Nowjucke's comment. I encourage the Town Council to adopt the budget as presented. After a 0% increase last year, I believe the budget is well within reason to catch up on capital projects that were delayed both on the town and school side. I fear that our town and educational services will suffer if we do not catch up and I respectfully ask the council to consider the impact of the pandemic, not just on finances, but on the well-being of our residents and the vitality of this community going forward. Thank you. And my own comment, my name is Emily Colini and I'm at 30 High Street. And my comment is similar to Meg's in that I realize that this is an unusually high budget that is being presented to you and I think we are in extraordinary times and I understand if there needs to be, you know, justification of why it would be a high year. And I think the pandemic is proof that we were tight last year. We tightened the belt when we needed to. We were unsure what to expect. I know we were offering tax deferments and no one knew how that was going to play out, but now with more information, I do think it's important to get back on track because the further we slip, the longer and harder it is to get back to where we needed to be. And I know the town leaders here in Farmington are always very cautious and careful at keeping the town's best interests at heart and also, you know, seeing the long picture. So I encourage you to consider that as you make your decisions this year for the budget and keep in mind that falling further behind will surely cost us in the long run. So I encourage you to be generous with your allowances for the additional increases this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Tim Kelly.
Tim?
Yes, give me a quick check here. Can you hear me?
You're good.
Great. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. Look, this year has certainly been a different and difficult one on many levels and we absolutely respect all the hard work people have put in to pull through it. But today, obviously, we're here to talk about next year. I think it's fair to assume that by Labor Day, anybody who wants a vaccine will have gotten it. So better, more normal days should be just ahead. I was surprised to see the budget increase request from our school system. They are asking for a 4.3% increase on top of last year's $70 million budget, which was a 3.35% increase over the previous year. The superintendent obviously felt empowered by her board to bid high this year. Apparently, the Board of Ed in one morning Zoom meeting was able to go through a 200-page budget document and not find any areas to trim. For you liberal arts majors, that's less than one minute per page, but I guess we'll chalk it up to COVID malaise. In these discussions, you'll often hear people talk about cuts, but the fact is, we've never decreased the school budget in Farmington. We've always increased year to year, true, thick and thin. So if we're going to increase the budget, the question is how much? Rather than just be inwardly focused, perhaps we need to benchmark ourselves. And we don't want to compare ourselves to the general Connecticut state averages because I think that can be a bit of a slow race. So I look at, for instance, a town like Simsburg. Their district and ours, we both have about the same student enrollment. Both towns have seven school buildings to maintain and both communities value education and offer special services. Simsburg is proposing a school budget of 2.1% increase. Now, West Hartford is budgeting a 2.2% school increase. Our other neighbor is Plainville, 2.2%. Newington is a 0% increase. And I understand Manchester's at 0%. They're not really a comparable district, but certainly we can't have more challenges than they do. Now, based on the latest available data, we're already spending more per student than Simsburg and West Hartford as well as Granby and Cheshire. And we're spending about the same as Avon and Glastonbury. So how do we pull ourselves more in line with expectations? The first and largest cost factor obviously is personnel. And every year, as you know, there'll be a case to add just one more program and a couple more people. The superintendent, though, is requesting an additional 7.5 headcount in his budget. So the fully burdened cost of that is about $750,000. This should be rejected. Last year's pre-COVID school budget was funded in resource for enrollment of over 4,100 students. So why do we need more headcount at this time to teach the same or maybe less in the coming year? Now, the second biggest issue is the utilization of federal funding that has already been set for Farmington schools. The superintendent wants to spread the $1 million over the next two years at 500K per year. Given what we know, we should apply the entire amount to this coming budget year. That's a net add of $500,000. Because I think it's clear with the massive new stimulus package just being passed, there will be a lot of follow-on funding rolling downhill to our schools for the future years. And then the third category of increased expenses to be addressed is what I would call miscellaneous. So when you go through the budget, you've got a new equipment slash other line for an additional $120,000. You've got custodial supplies with a 58% increase, $74,000. So in a post-COVID world, I'm just wondering, as an example, why we'd need that additional expense. Then there's another area where we're talking about desks, window shades, and some other cosmetics at the high school for $30,000. You know, we shouldn't throw another bucket of paint at the high school, given our intent to build and furnish a new facility. And then we're looking at increased membership fees of $20,000. So if you just look at those four miscellaneous line items, that's $250,000. So these three areas of savings, the personnel stabilization, the federal funding usage, and the miscellaneous expense control will enable us to give Farmington schools a budget increase of 1.5 million instead of the requested 3 million. We'll have the same number of teachers, same level of education services. There's no need to eliminate anything we had last year or the year before. And I think that's a strategy we need to embrace at this time. Now, there are a couple other major areas of budget concern that we may have saw tonight.
Tim, can you hear me, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, you're at seven minutes now, so if you could try and wind it up, I'd appreciate it.
All right, I'll tie it up here real quick.
Thank you.
So A, director salary cost is up almost $500,000. That's an increase of more than 50%. This is overhead, not teaching resource. Enough said. And over the past decade, our school district embarked on a strategy to invest heavily in resource and programs to provide special ed services in-house. The justification was that we could do it cheaper and hopefully better than sending kids out of district. However, this budget request plans to spend an additional 400K on public and private tuition. So we will spend almost 1.2 million for private school tuition. So again, we spoke earlier about utilizing the extra 500K of federal funding this year. Perhaps it could go towards the unusual spike in special services that we seem to be dealing with. And gentlemen, good luck in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anna?
One more person, Don. I'm not last name.
Don, if you could tell us your last name.
Yeah, Donald Doobie, 94 Oak Ridge.
Thank you.
I've already submitted public comments, so I just want to supplement them. I think we should take strategically and tactically over the next couple of months here. Strategically, in the sense that how does Farmington's tax rate and proposed tax rate compare to some of our neighbors, which in the marketplace, we are really competing with them. But for decades, we've always been pretty much in the lowest quartile, maybe in, well, 10% in terms of tax rate. So I think we've done very well. What I've been able to find recently, Simsburg is proposing a 0.45% tax increase. Now, a lot of that has to do with the fact that they've got a big jump in their grant list because of a lot of development, I understand apartments, for example. Avon's looking at 2.9%. I haven't found anything else recently. So I think, you know, 3% is absolutely the maximum that we should be shooting for. But really, the thousand-pound gorilla in the room is the high school and what its impact going to be. The finance director listed one scenario of how the taxes might increase over the next five years or so. I added it up, something around $546 per year for the average assessed house, which if you divide by the tax that the house might be paying, it's like 8.6% to be phased in over five years. That's a jump. And that's on top of the nominal 2% to 3% that we're going to get year to year typically. And just for a reference point, I am now retired and the Social Security cost of living adjustment for those drawing Social Security benefits is 1.3%. So that's something to keep in mind as you set the tax increase. Finally, tactically, I know you're talking about possibly holding the referendum in June. There may be reasons for it so early, maybe the budget cycle with the state, but really, you've got to think about this. You're going to go to referendum in April, asking for whatever you're asking for, 2%, 3% tax increase? If that fails, there'll be second referendum in May and then just one month later, you're going to be going to the voters again, looking for approval of $110 million or so for the high school. And retirees, I find out, have a lot of time on their hands to read all the documents and all the information and they can do the addition and they'll see 8.6% phased in over five years. That's a lot to ask of the voters. So I think you should really think about whether you want to have back-to-back referendums, if you will, and whether you might not try to spread it out so you can do some marketing, so to speak, in the meantime. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. And we are seeing no other public comment. Last call. Okay, with that, we will move to item D.
I make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Joe Capitaro II.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So the Board of Education should be on their way down and you guys are going to go through the Board of Education's budget. We'll be listening upstairs and so if you need me or any of my staff, we'll be upstairs. And then when they're done, the intent is that I'll come back and we'll talk about if we're going to take on the General Administration Group of Accounts.
Very good.
Okay.
And I'll remind the council, we have absolutely no authority on how the Board of Education spends their budget. As the fiscal authority in town, our job is to set their budget. They decide and they have sole discretion to decide how they spend their budget. So in past years, we've asked, digging down, and we've tried to direct them. It is not our job to direct them. It is our job to set the budget. So I just want to remind you all of that. And with that, we will welcome.
Hi.
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 Yes.
Ellen.
Oh.
I can't remember where we go here. We can be everyone, right? How do we?
Good afternoon.
Can you get it here?
Do I start? Do I start? Okay.
Give me the thumbs up when you're ready. Anna? Okay, we are back off mute, I believe, so welcome the Board of Education.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Ellen Sayuda, Chair of the Farmington Board of Education. And to the council, we are back. We have our whole team here this afternoon and I want to introduce everyone. We of course have our Superintendent of Schools, Kathy Greeter, Kim Nguyen, our Assistant Superintendent, Alicia Bowman, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, along with Beth Haber, our Business Manager, Matt Ross, our Director of Technology, Sam Kilpatrick, he is with us, our Director of Facilities, Lori Singer, our Director of Special Services is also here. She's with us remotely. Lori Singer?
Yes.
Yeah. And Kara Bridgewater, our Human Resources Coordinator. So as I said, we're all here as a team to provide more clarity on our budget and answer any of your questions as we'll be going through our budget section by section. And as I stated last night, this budget was presented to the Board last month at our budget workshop. We did an extensive page-by-page review over many hours and as you know, we brought this budget to you. The Board voted unanimously on this budget. I'm very proud of our Board. They're very thoughtful and intelligent and committed people on the Board. I know myself, I am a liberal arts major. I'm an English major. I don't know what other majors our Board members are, not that it matters, but so we did bring that budget to you without making any reductions. Some context with that, this is an unprecedented year and as a Board, we've had a front row seat to what our school district has been through this year. And I give so much credit to our Superintendent and her team and how they have literally held this district together and kept our students and our faculty in school and just literally put their heads down and kept going. Many other districts have not been able to do that as successfully as Farmington. We're super proud of that. We have an exemplar leadership team. We're just very fortunate. But, you know, it's been challenging and I just, I feel that our Board, the feelings I get from them, that we feel an increased sense of responsibility to ensure that we can recover from this and that our students can recover from this. And of course, we want to work with you. We need your partnership to do that. So again, for the benefit of this meeting, I just want to reiterate the themes you saw in our budget. You saw rebuilding and reinstatement after significant reductions to our budget. You've heard many of the impacts, of course, of COVID-19 and you know, we have a continued commitment as a Board to our equity, inclusion, and social justice work and we share that commitment with you. I also stated last evening as a Board and central office team that we want to work together with you on this budget. We want to find the balance that we need. And it's not lost to us that the new high school referendum coming up, that there is a new high school referendum coming up. No one understands the importance and desperate need for that building more than those of us that are before you here. But we also feel a responsibility to our students and our faculty. This pandemic has taken a toll on learning at every grade level and we have escalating mental health and behavioral issues and we need to invest in the recovery of our students and faculty because we could be dealing with this for quite some time. It's important to remember that COVID will, the ramifications of COVID will be with us next year. It's not going away. So I just implore you just to keep this in mind, you know, as we work together. And now I think I will turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Kathy Greeter, as we take you section by section of our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's nice to be here today with all of you in person and I'll start by going to the first section of our budget, which is the salary section. And the salary series accounts for 65.6% of the total budget with a 3.38% increase. And I went over in my
be dealing with this for quite some time. It's important to remember that COVID will, the ramifications of COVID will be with us next year. It's not going away. So I just implore you just to keep this in mind, you know, as we work together. And now I think I will turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Kathy Greeter, as we take you section by section of our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's nice to be here today with all of you in person. And I'll start by going to the first section of our budget, which is the salary section. And the salary series accounts for 65.6% of the total budget with a 3.38% increase. And I went over in my presentation, you know, the various, and we can look on that page or that slide up on the screen. This is, all of the association's increases for next year are on this slide, just so that you can see where we are with each of our groups. We are negotiating with our non-certified, our classified staff this spring. So there is a particular area in the budget where we do place that money for, and we save that for negotiations, for whatever increase we establish once we go through negotiations. So you're going to see one page in the budget, which is the director's line, that's much higher, but that's because it's reserved for negotiations. That's where we put that amount of funding. So I guess I would open it up to the Town Council if you have any questions in the staffing section of the budget book.
I guess I'll start, because I'm the first one. I would just echo Ellen's comments and thank you, Kathy, and the entire administration for all your efforts this past year in, you know, carrying our students through a very, very difficult and challenging time. Just on the negotiations, I mean, you know, having been served as Chair of the Board of Ed and been involved there, and knowing the data that we collect, is there been any impact on negotiations in other towns? Do we have that data and how that's turning out? Is it impacted by COVID at all, or the negotiations that you see?
No, we do have comparable data. We always get all of the negotiated contracts where that they land. And, you know, we always try to, you know, be in the bottom of the top third or in that particular area when we end as far as the percentage increase.
Have you seen any trends or anything yet?
No, we really haven't seen any impact at this point. So it's very similar to what we were experiencing before COVID.
Okay. No, just curious.
Thanks.
Other question. Brian?
Yes, a quick question. I also want to say thank you for all you're doing for our schools and for our town, and for the value of our property, and definitely for the kids in this tough time. But there are a few things that I do want to ask, and that is, it's been brought up in earlier comments from the town. There was, they're making comparisons. Comparisons are being made to other school systems, which I understand. But of course, when you're looking at aggregate numbers like that, it's very much like you're comparing apples and oranges, because each of us has different needs. But to provide information for the town, as we go through the process, would you be able to explain some of those points that are important to what makes Farmington schools stronger and better by making that type of investment? And, you know, maybe we, obviously, we don't have the same kind of needs, and we don't need to talk about other schools. We definitely want to talk about ourselves and what we're bringing to the table and to the town by making those investments in our school system.
Sure. Yes. So first of all, thank you. I do want to say that it has been a collaborative effort with our faculty, staff, our families, students, administrators, our Board of Education getting through this year. We're really proud that Farmington has been in person all year. It's really remarkable that we haven't had a situation where we've had to go out to remote learning for prolonged periods of time, like many districts are not even get in person until, you know, well into the school year. So we're really proud of the collaborative work that everyone has done, and it's been a heavy lift for us this year. So just thank you all for recognizing, you know, everyone's efforts in the school district. I would say that, you know, it is a bit of a unique year. We certainly have all the fixed costs, and I do think that there's a particular slide within the presentation that gives a good indication of, you know, the major drivers, and that is, you know, what the budget drivers are. So salaries of the 4.3%, 2.23% are salaries, you know, the negotiated salary increases that I referred to. We also have, you know, it's not as large as some other years, but self-insurance does have a 0.6% increase. And that just has to do with not only our claim trends, but also those catastrophic claims, and we are experiencing some of those this year and last year. So that does impact what the increase will be. I think a big, you know, two big drivers this year are special services. And I explained that in my presentation. It's 0.57% of the total 4.3% increase, and it has to do with unanticipated enrollment. So students who transfer in that are already outplaced, so they're already in a program, and then they transfer into Farmington as a student. And those costs then are, you know, that's on us to pay for those outplacements. We have a very really significant, we have many specialized programs, because we have a philosophy in Farmington that our students should be educated within the district, and we should. And that means that they can fully, you know, really take advantage of all of the programming we have here, both during the day and after school, you know, our sports programming, our arts programming. So it's a real benefit to educate our students here in Farmington. So we have several specialized programs that students are able to stay within the district and they're educated within the district. But there are times that students transfer in and they're already outplaced. So this is really primarily that situation for the 0.57%. Another driver is reinstatement of items that we reduced in the 2020, 2021 budget. So you'll see here, it's about $366,072 or a 0.52% of the 4.3. And it basically is facility projects, K-8 summer school, and technology. So that's what makes up that amount. And then for transportation, we do have a probably higher-than-usual increase in transportation contract. But we also, you know, we were, if you look at our ranking for transportation, we also need to, you know, be fair to our bus company. And so that, the last three-year contract, they were a little higher increases. But if you looked in the past, we had very low increases in transportation for many, many, many years. So that's 0.22% of the overall 4.3% increase. And then for other areas, like equity enhancements and supplies and COVID-19 impact, we do have a larger supply increase this year, and it's because we learned many lessons this year about how much it costs to aggressively clean our buildings every day and provide masks for individuals who can't, you know, don't bring in a mask or are able to do that. And, you know, just all of the shields and everything we've had to provide to create multiple layers of mitigation so that we don't see spread in our schools of COVID-19. All of those layers helped us to stay in school in person this whole year. So you do have to make an investment, but that investment really pays off because number one is the health and safety of our students, our faculty and staff. So you can see that, you know, it's a large part of the 4.3% are these fixed costs or, you know, contracts that we've already negotiated. And, you know, that's what you see in this particular budget when it comes to the drivers. And there are some unique drivers, like reinstatement of various things that we had to cut out of last year's budget.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have one other question. Anyone else? Any other questions?
I have one.
Peter?
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all. I have a question. Maybe just give us a little bit more insight under the director's account, 115. And on the bottom there with the explanation, I'd like to go, the increase in this account is also due to the lack of funding to offset administrative salaries. One, full-time educator, business manager for oversight of Excel, as well as a half of, a full-time educator of the Equity Inclusion Coordinator salary from a grant to the operating budget. Haven't we always budgeted for a business manager right along?
So I can speak to that one.
Yeah.
So part of our business managers' responsibilities include the oversight of continuing education, our extended care and learning program, meaning the financials of those organizations as well. So those are self-sustaining, and those have seen a significant decrease during this last year in their operating funds because we have had a lack of participation in those programs due to COVID-19.
And meaning, sorry.
That's okay.
Meaning Excel?
Yep.
So there was a dramatic decline in Excel, subsequently less revenue?
You got it.
Okay, so now we're going to, we're trying to make up the difference for the lost revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And do we, what, putting aside everything else, what would that figure be for the Excel and the Inclusion Coordinator salary?
Well, the Equity Inclusion Coordinator is not part of the Excel. That's, that was...
I understand. It's in the, it's in the funding for this account, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So you're asking what the dollar amount is for those two?
Yeah.
So the Equity Inclusion Coordinator is $38,250 in our budget. The Business Manager is $94,432. And also in that line is what Kathy referred to previously with the reserve for negotiations for the non-certified.
Yeah, I get that.
Yep. There's other things in there as well, but those are...
Yeah, my main question was just, the shortfall in this account was due to the revenue from the Excel, and we're trying to make up for that to pay for the administrators?
Well, Excel doesn't have the revenue to pay for this position.
Okay.
So what we did was, we had to put the position back onto our budget or offset with our budget.
Okay.
And the other, another component to this is that we, we had to, we had to do some, previously, you would have seen this salary in a different line, and we shifted it because it was in the wrong line, essentially. So now it's in directors, and that's why you also see the decrease in central office.
And then the full-time, the Equity Coordinator's salary is only $38,000?
No, that's partially.
Partially.
It's 0.5 of a 1.0 position.
All right, so it's half of it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Ted?
Yeah. I'd like to thank the Board and the Superintendent for all the hard work you guys have put in, especially in this trying time with the COVID pandemic. Definitely applaud all of your hard work there. And also want to echo the comments. I've heard from a lot of Ellen and others that I think we should work together to kind of find that right balance, knowing we have the high school, but also knowing we have very important needs within the school system that we have to address as well. With that said, my question, if you want to turn to page four, where we have the FTEs. So just looking kind of down that and looking at the changes here, it looks like from Farmington High School, we kind of had a decrease last year. So we went from, in the 1920 budget, we went from a 109.6 down to a 108.9. We're moving up to a 111.1, so that part of that 2.2 change is building back what we, what we lost there. And same thing goes for the Irving Robbins. We went from a 51.1 in 1920 to a 49.32 in 2021, and moving back up to a 49.42. So that's partially rebuilding what we lost last year. For special education, though, it looks like it's an increase across all three years. So I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to what that FTE is, what the, kind of the need is there, and, you know, how that's going to benefit the district?
So, did you want to?
So I'll just speak to the special education, and then Kim can speak to a little more detail on the other FTE increases. But in special education, we have a specialized program for students who are on the autism spectrum. And this, the enrollment in this program is increasing dramatically at the elementary level. So it's really just a class size issue that we need to have class size in a certain range. And so that 1.0 would be a specialized learning center teacher at the elementary level to, because of increased enrollment at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Did you want to hear any more about the high school and middle school?
Yeah, if you want to expand on that anymore, that'd be great as well.
Sure. So part of the increases at the high school relate to FTEs to provide increased programming for students. So we are looking to implement a Black and Latino Studies course in the Social Studies Department. That's one thing. In order to meet graduation requirements for the class of 2023, all seniors must complete a mastery-based diploma assessment course. And for us, we're calling those courses either a capstone course or an aspire course. So the FTEs related to increasing those types of courses in various departments allows our juniors and seniors to begin taking those classes as part of their graduation requirements. In addition, we are looking to expand our American Sign Language classes. Right now, we're only able to offer Level 1, and we have tremendous amount of student interest. So we're looking to add Level 2 so that our students can progress in that area as well. So that's what's, those are the FTEs that would be contributing to the high school increase. And at IAR this year, there's just a minor 0.1 increase, but we are looking to shift sort of the leadership model at Irving Robbins Middle School. And through some good thinking on the part of the principal and leadership team there, they were able to reduce in some areas and add in others so that the net effect increase is only a 0.1 FTE for this year. And it would be teacher leadership shift in the structure?
Great. Thank you very much. One last question while we're on this page. The non-deployeds at the bottom there, I was just kind of reading the asterisks, and it looks like this is due to unpredictable employment, enrollment shifts. So are you seeing kind of that shift right now? And can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
Yes. So this year, if you read our enrollment report, you'll see that we had many more families choose homeschooling because of COVID-19 and the, you know, their fears of in-person learning and how there might not be as much continuity of learning. We, again, have been fortunate in that regard, but I think it was the unknown of students possibly moving into remote and then moving back into in-person and then maybe hybrid. And so parents were worried about that. So we have a larger than what we've ever had before of parents who chose homeschooling. And, you know, that wasn't anticipated in our enrollment projections. We didn't know COVID was going to be here when we did those projections. And so we did see, our projections were a bit off because of that. And we also saw kindergarten families keeping their children home for one more year to kind of wait out the pandemic. And so when we do our projections, they're based on students who are in school. So when we have anomalies, like more families homeschooling and more families keeping their kindergarten child out, we take our projections and we move them forward. We are predicting that our projections will be a little off because of that, because the numbers, it's an anomaly year, and the numbers are off, you know, this school year because of the pandemic. So what you see here is elementary non-deployed are really within board policy. We just don't want to deploy them yet because what we've learned over the years is, if you deploy too early, you could deploy them to the wrong school. So we hold back to FTE every year, and we wait until the summer when enrollment really does stabilize, and that's when we deploy those teachers. So we're just trying to be really, we wouldn't want to deploy them early, realize that we have, we deployed them to the wrong areas, but, you know, class lists have gone out, all of that has gone out. And then we have to add FTE. So it's really to be very, like, fiscally responsible to wait and deploy those two teachers so that we're not having to then deploy more. The COVID non-deployed certainly have to do with a worry about our projections, given this anomaly this year. But it's also, if you, if you're a parent in district... But it's also, if, if you, if you're a parent in district, you will see that we've had a lot of substitutes this year, and, you know, that we've had more teachers out, and some for the whole year that, because of the pandemic. And so we did put 2.0 COVID-related for not only the enrollment issue, but also if we continue to have, you know, COVID, and we really are trying to figure out what does it mean, you know, when everyone is vaccinated, will we still have to wear masks? We believe from what we're hearing from DPH, it's a yes. We will still have to socially distance. There may be a similar pattern this year with more teachers out. So we were just trying to also plan for that issue, not only on the enrollment side, but on the health and safety side, too.
Thank you for the explanation.
Brian?
All covered.
Right. Peter?
I just want to follow up on something I had. When you mean by homeschooling, the parents have taken over the instruction of teaching their children?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Wow. So how many, if, how many kids or families took their kids literally out of the system?
Off the top of my head, and this is really, I have to check, but I think it was 53, I think.
53 kids?
Fifty-three children homeschooled. That would, that's much higher. And again, I'm really trying to remember on enrollment report, but I believe it was 53 children that would have been in school that are homeschooled this year.
And you've had, I would say you probably at this point have dialogue with them, asking them how they feel about bringing their kids back in.
We absolutely do.
Yes. Both the kindergarten families who kept their kindergarten children home for one year, and they'll enter kindergarten in the coming year, and those homeschooled families, many of whom would be returning, and again, returning depending on how things are with the pandemic.
Right. And the majority of those kids were kindergarten age or all over?
All, I would say, a variety of grade levels.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other question. Joe?
It's not on salary, if that's okay. We can move off that. Again, thank you both, Ellen, Kathy, for all your work, your boards. It's obviously you guys have a strong passion for our students, and you advocate for them very well, so thank you for everything you do. And just like Ellen said, we have to find a balance. You guys obviously advocating for a portion for our community, and that we still have to worry about our disabled, our elderly, our retired, our single families, and stuff like that. So balance is definitely a key issue. I definitely want to see this high school passed. I don't think we'll get a third chance at this, so I definitely want to see this budget come down a little bit so we can get this done. But my question is on the Racial Equity Task Force. I know, I said on the board, obviously, and I know you guys have seen the bullet points come across your desk, I know there's a line item already established. Can you tell me a little bit more what's included in that line item?
So you'll, you will see equity enhancements across all of the series, so I would say that it's not just in salaries, it's not just in, you know, one or two areas, it's across many, many areas. And so, I was looking, you know, the overall spreadsheet we did?
Yeah.
We have that. I think I have it. Okay. So if you wanted to know, like, in this budget, where we see the equity enhancements, it's about $274,750, because it's across all series, and I can give you some examples.
Please.
So .5 of the 1.0 Equity and Inclusion Coordinator is $38,250. Library books, about $18,000, because we can, we have been for many years, and we continue to shift the library purchases to books that reflect the students within our district, and, you know, just all of the diversity, that's such a strength here in Farmington. We want to make sure students have access to books where the characters look like them. So that would be library books. We also have classroom libraries within each classroom, and that's about $4,000. Summer internships, $3,000, and that's when we bring new faculty on. And we really are doing a lot of recruitment in this area to have more diversity within our staff, faculty and staff, and then we would want them to start a bit earlier, just so that they, you know, as, as they transition, it's a really smooth transition into our school district. Curriculum development, about $6,000. We have a new partnership we're really excited about, Equal Opportunity Schools Partnership. It's a $20,000 partnership. They are working directly with our high school to increase the number of Black and Brown students accessing AP courses at our high school. DM Group software, that is a purchase to really maximize our special education staff through scheduling and having the most efficient scheduling possible. But it definitely is, has an equity impact there, so that we're really maximizing our faculty when it comes to services to children, and that's $12,500. We are creating a summer AP program that directly comes from the racial, the Racial Equality Task Force, and that would be, again, a summer AP programming to kind of give students a head start when it comes to AP courses. That's $4,000. Professional Development, $6,000. So we're doing a lot of, you know, equity, inclusivity training, and social justice training. And then recruitment efforts, $3,000. And then bringing our summer school back into our budget is about $160,000, because we did reduce that. But that is absolutely an equity, because these are students who, you know, across our district, who are not meeting standard and require, you know, summer programming.
So?
So those are, but it totals about $274,750.
Okay, for the summer school, for the AP courses. So are you preparing them for AP courses coming into the high school? Or are you trying to bring them up to a level? Because obviously, summer school is to, you know, help kids get to their level where they need, supposed to be.
Just really giving them, and, you know, a bit of extra time prior to the school year beginning, so that they're really prepared for the level of rigor in our AP courses, and just a head start, you know, with that particular course. I don't know, Kim, if you want to say anything, because I know you're working directly on this.
Right. We just met today with the Equal Opportunity Schools Partnership and talked about, we've gone through a pretty significant process to identify students with what, what we're calling AP potential. And so through a counseling process, for those students who we want to encourage to develop the confidence to take an AP class, our commitment back to them is to say, we're going to help you be ready, we're going to help you have the skills, the study habits, a little previewing of the curriculum, so that when you start the year, you, you have that confidence to succeed. It would be something like a two-week AP, for lack of a better word, like an AP bootcamp to help those students who are going to enroll in an AP class. So this year's budget for that is, is relatively minimal in terms of the number of students who would participate in that. And Equal Opportunity Schools Partnership will help us develop the program, model it after successful programs that have already been created in, in other districts, so that we can start, you know, very successfully right out of the gate.
So you said you're identifying students and stuff. So how many students you, you think you're looking at and teachers for this particular part?
I, I think this will take approximately three teachers to run the two-week program, and some supplies. I don't, I don't know if I could say exactly how many students would be enrolled in the program, but it'll be a fairly small number. It'll be something like 10 to 12 students to start with, to, you know, because they'll be, they'll be enrolling in different, they won't all be taking the same AP class.
And thank you. That was my other question. Sorry. So your bootcamp basically is going to, has to be developed towards any type of AP course?
Right.
It's not going to be a general bootcamps, whatever side they go into or subject, they're already prepared. So you have to tailor make it for each AP course you have?
Well, some of the, the skills about, you know, study skills and preparation, and some of it is generically applicable, no matter what class you're taking, and then some will be differentiated by the subject.
Okay. And obviously, you're still going to offer in-person and Zoom for this? Or is this going to be based only in-person or based only Zoom?
I'm sure we'll offer, you know, both options for families, so that we make sure that there are no barriers to participation.
Okay. And if you could just provide me the copy of that spreadsheet, that'd be much appreciated.
What was that?
A copy of the spreadsheet.
Oh, sure.
With the detail.
Thank you. Too quick to write down.
Other question. Gary?
I'd like to thank Board of Ed, Ellen, Kathy, everybody, keeping our kids in school. I'm sure it was quite a challenge through COVID last year and this year. Ed, just had a quick question on nurses. I see an increase of 1.5.
On the nurses?
Maybe on the wrong page here.
Which page are you looking at?
Maybe page 12. It says accounting goals.
12.
121, see the count.
Yep.
Page 12. Page 24.
So I believe we have the same FTE as we had this year. We, we actually have eight nurses in district with seven schools. We added a floating nurse a few years back, which was a blessing during a pandemic, for sure. But there is, not that we are following it strictly, but at the high school, with the number of students we have, you usually have a nurse for every 750 students, so having the floating nurse really does assist quite a bit up at the high school. The floating nurse also goes to various schools when we have to do screenings. Westwood's is notorious for, by the state, you know, the state of Connecticut determines when we have to do particular screenings, health screenings on students, and for some reason, the five, six grade level has a lot. And so there are periods of the year, times where our floating nurse would go to Westwood's to assist. Our floating nurse also helps with, when a nurse might be out, and, you know, it's wonderful to have someone who's a Farmington nurse who's covering. So we're really thrilled that we were able to add a nurse a few years back, so that we have eight nurses. They are, they, in their contract, they have a 1.5% increase at the top step only, and then anyone on step gets step, but they, not the GWI.
Thank you.
Other question.
I have one more, sir.
Joe?
Just one more for the janitorial supplies you're talking about, keeping the classrooms clean. Is that reimbursed already at one point from the federal government or from the state? Because we have to keep such levels to maintain?
Yep. Yes, that is correct. Well, that was one of the ways you could, you, one of the allowable ways to use the funds that were provided, and we did definitely use them for things like PPE, cleaning supplies. Like Kathy said, any kind of, you know, protective shields, any unanticipated cost, Joe, that we didn't plan for, that was allowable. We tried to maximize our reimbursement on that.
Okay.
And that, and the amount that we put into the budget for that line item is a very conservative number, based on what we, we spent, spent this year.
Right. And obviously, we're looking forward to air handlers and us, like we talked about a couple of days ago, for upgrading projects and stuff?
Well, we did a thorough ventilation review, which is on our website, and we were really proud to do that early on, so that we knew what areas we need to, needed to tweak. But it was a very favorable review of our ventilation systems with items that needed, and this is when Tim Harris was here, we were able to address all of the items within that review, you know, right, really at the start of the school year, so we were very proactive about that.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Right. Circle back just to a couple of things. And yes, thank you. It's, I know the parents have been very thankful that you were mostly in person this year. I've heard that a number of times, and meeting the challenges. It's certainly been a challenging year all around, so thank you for all of that. Peter was asking about the homeschooling, you said around 53. I know that's not an exact number. What's our current enrollment in the school system?
Let me grab my.
Roughly.
It's a little under 4,000.
A little under four.
But I need to, I'm sure that.
Hold it up.
Oh, Matt.
Thanks.
Matt.
He's over there.
Is it three nines? Yeah, I don't want to.
Including pre-K, 43, I could, no, no, again. 4,133.
Okay. And what's the change on that year-over-year?
It was less this year. I, I would say that you're giving a total.
With pre-K.
Yeah, with pre-K, so.
It'd be the above pre-K.
It should be actually in the back of the book, right? Enrollment? Yeah.
Without pre-K is 4,006, and that does not include any of the out-of-district or band of kids.
So just, just because it's in the back of the book and under enrollment E1, it was, and that's, you were given a number with preschool. It's, it was 4,068 in 1920, and that's on October 1st. And then in 2021, it was 3,994. So we, we did have a decrease, but you could associate that directly with what, that, those two trends I, I discussed. And then our projection for next year is 3,988. But as I said, it's based on this year's projection, which has students that would normally have been in school, not present, when we actually did the October 1 projection.
Gotcha. Great, thank you. Also, to follow up on a couple of Joe's points that he was asking on, the summer AP, have we ever done summer AP?
No.
No.
Okay, so this would be a totally new initiative. You said 4,000 for summer AP, then 160,000 for reinstating summer school.
That's K-8.
Okay, K through 8. And that's for everyone in K through 8? That's for the entire student population?
Any, anyone who is below, right, that, you know, the grade level standard in, in particular areas, and those students are recommended for summer school by their.
But it, it does not include extended school year in special services?
It does not. No, this is regular education, summer school. We also run a mandated special services, special education, summer school.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm just, when we're talking about the racial equity costs, that wouldn't all just go directly to the racial equity, that would go to the entire population of students.
Right. Any child who might be considered in the gap, so equity is also, you know, I mean, it, it falls along many different areas, so.
Understand.
Yep.
Okay, that's all. No more questions, I think we can move on to the next section. Thank you.
So the next section of the budget is benefits, and this accounts for 16.6% of the total budget with a 3.56% increase over the 2020, 2021 budget. And I would just open it up to any questions you have in this section.
Questions on benefits.
How were claims? Just out there.
How were they this year?
Yeah.
Well, this is a, I feel like we sound like a broken record, but it was an odd year, so different, a different cycle than normal years. And actually just had a claims utilization meeting. So as Kathy said, we, we do have some catastrophic claims. That's unfortunate. Some that we, we hope are going to trend in a different direction, and some that are lasting. So it looked different in the spring, and then we saw in September a big, a big spike as people got back to work. And then we've pretty much, the year itself has kind of evened out. So this year's request is definitely lower than we had, have asked for previously, in our percentage increase.
I have one more.
Sure.
I made a note here. I think I ask this every year.
I made a note here. I think I ask this every year. On the HSA contribution, this is the feed money we give to employees to get their HSA account up and going. Eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
So each contract is different, and they, and each, each association negotiates that. Usually, it's a 50-50 split with the district and the employee, usually.
Okay, so for the teachers, bargain-in-unit, what do we, what feed money do we give every contract year? It must be every, every year part of the contract. Do we contribute $1,000 to each individual?
It depend, it also depends on, yeah, whether your family or an individual plan.
Okay, so we still continue this practice of, of priming the pump, so to speak. Yeah.
Yeah, and we also have a co-insurance. I would just tell you that that is highly unusual in municipalities or in boards of ed. We had always negotiated a co-insurance, so when someone meets that deductible, they're still sharing costs beyond that. And then we have, like, an out-of-pocket max, so they continue to do that until they hit the out-of-pocket max for, you know, their particular contract. We can certainly give you each contract's deductible level and the co-insurance out-of-pocket max.
That's not necessary. I just like to bring this up every year because it's a, it's a huge number that we contribute to the employees every year.
Yeah.
That's all.
So for example, for our administrator union, we contribute 50%, so for an individual, it's 1,000; for family, it's 2,000. They also do also, just, just like PPOs, they also contribute a percentage, so. Those percentages are high here of what our employees also contribute beyond the deductible. So, you know, we were one of, I think, the first districts in Connecticut to go in this direction, and we are, we also have 100% of our associations on a high deductible HSA.
Yeah, I understand all that. I'm just, I'm just saying that these plans continuously get funded with their HSA accounts every year.
Absolutely, that's part of the negotiated contract.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to the next section.
The next section? Services, I know. I don't know. Yep, okay, so the next section is the services series, and that accounts for about 14.32% of the total budget. It has an 8.52% increase over the 2020, 2021 budget. And on that particular slide, for services, we provide an overview of, you know, what some of those drivers are for a larger-than-normal increase in the services series. So one has to do with K-8 summer school, and also facility projects that were reduced in the previous, well, in this budget year. It also, it has our transportation contract in that particular account. And we also, let's see, oh, so, and it also accounts for special services, consultation services, and tuition costs. So you see a larger tuition cost, I went over that earlier, than we normally would have. Because we have so many specialized programming, you know, programs within the district, we don't typically see that. But as I explained, we did have some new enrollment that the students were already outplaced. And during this particular year, just a little more challenging, even if we have programming in district, a little more challenging bringing students back.
Questions on services? Seeing none. Next.
Okay, next section is the supplies series, and that's, accounts for only about 2.64% of our budget, overall budget. There's a 3.63% increase over the 2020, 2021 budget in this series.
Questions on supplies? Seeing none. To equipment.
Okay, the equipment series accounts for 0.45% of our total budget. There's a larger increase here because of technology that we reduced last school year. So you'll see a 55.92% increase over the 2020, 2021 budget in this series.
Questions on equipment? Okay, next.
So the last, are we on the last series now? The last series is dues and fees. Oh, no, okay.
Can I just, you know, direct a question to Matt, and thank you especially for keeping the virtual learning environment up. But can you just give a summary of where we are in the one-to-one program and the technology? If you can just run through it a little bit to update us, and generally, on the one-to-one and where we stand on that.
I'm going to move over to the mic.
Yeah.
See, so you have a.
Got it, thank you. So that everybody can hear me. So we are currently take-home one-to-one, grades K through 12. We were accelerated due to COVID. Our plans going into, the original plans during the budget proposal process last year were to originally go grades 5 through 12. We scaled that back last year to grades 5 through 8 only. And due to COVID in March, to meet the needs of our students in a remote learning situation, we deployed all of our inventory out to our students. There were major delays on receipt of equipment due to a number of reasons, demand being one of them, but also the available supply, but we did recently receive all of our new Chromebooks that were purchased and are in the process of shifting our inventory. Not knowing what the future is going to bring, and with our original intentions to go to a take-home one-to-one program with our students, we are planning to continue that for the fall. And so the proposed amounts that are in the budget for this year account for continuing with a take-home one-to-one for K through 12. And I say K through 12, we do have a handful of pre-K students with special needs that we do provide some devices for, but it's a much smaller number. We do focus primarily on the kindergarten through 12th grade students. It's a four-year cycle, so students receive a new device, well, students receive a new device in kindergarten. They receive a new device in fifth grade, and they'll receive a new device in ninth grade. So that elementary piece, we've stretched to a five-year. And really, what drives that, that cycle is the life of the devices and what Google will, will offer in terms of updates. There are requirements put forth by standardized testing that a device has to support a minimum operating system. So we are in the process right now of actually weeding out devices that do not support the standardized testing at the, across all grade levels, whether it's smarter balance, NGSS, AP. There are certain technical requirements for even the Chromebooks that have to be in play in order for students to test with those devices.
Okay, thank you. I got one question. Since you're still up there, obviously, this year is a big expenditure for one-on-one Chromebooks and stuff. How do we do with breakdowns, repairs, parents buy an insurance to repair the Chromebooks? Do we see anything out of whack?
So we did have a fairly good participation rate in the insurance program. It is optional. We can't force the insurance. Again, because we had not yet received any of our new inventory, we've been much more lenient this year with repairs, you know, and not, not shifting those costs back if they did not purchase insurance. We have worked with families to ensure that this, and worked with the teachers to ensure that students have devices, working devices with them at all times. We have seen, I wouldn't say we've seen anything beyond what we normally have seen. The thing is, these devices are being used more heavily now and are traveling. So if you were to average that out, we're not seeing an over, an overall increase in our repair rate, really. But, but we do have quite a few that come back, so.
Obviously. So are we looking to change the model as things change with COVID? Or are we going to stay with the kids' take-home to and from?
Again, for right now, we're looking at taking them to and from. We make, our original plan was to have classroom-based units at the K-4 level. We may go back to carts in the classrooms, however, again, due to hygiene and just some of the general network-related requirements, devices will still continue to be assigned to a particular student. They may or may not, at the elementary level, may or may not be transporting them to and from school on a regular basis. But we, we want to make sure we have the flexibility, should we need to, for whatever reason, to provide take-home devices.
Thank you.
Chris?
Matt, and then when we talk about, and this is maybe more a general question, but, and exposes my lack of familiarity in technology, but when we're, you know, and I don't know if we can, but in application servers, et cetera, is there synergies with what we do in town with what we can do with, on your end of it?
So Brian and I, Brian Rush is my counterpart on the town side. He and I work closely together. In the capital, you see the core server systems. That is a shared project that he and I work on. We did, worked collaboratively a couple of years ago to update the, the server systems to provide redundancy between both the town side and the school side. There are other areas that we've worked collaboratively wireless. So the controllers that the school district purchased a few years ago and leveraged federal E-rate dollars for reimbursement on. We have added access points at town properties, and so the Wi-Fi at several of those town properties are tied directly back to the school wireless controllers. Again, it's an economy of scale. At that point, it doesn't make sense for the town to have separate wireless controllers. Anywhere he and I can work collaboratively on things, we have tried. There are certain lines drawn between municipal licensing and education licensing. And so those are areas that we, you know, we can't do a whole lot in due to, due to the restrictions put forth by the manufacturers. But we have worked as best we can on, on projects where we can leverage those savings.
Okay, great, thank you.
Matt, what percent of the population, the student population at this point, does not have some type of take-home device?
Roughly 20%, and they're all at the high school, and they just haven't come to pick up their device. So it's not that we don't have one for them. We, again, we were, with the shortage on getting those new devices in, we allowed high schoolers to utilize personal devices for this academic year. But with, you know, should they be participating in testing, and our 11th graders are a good example with the NGSS, they must take that test using a school-issued device. So we have been trying to get those into the hands of all the remaining high schoolers, but that, that's the only place where we have students that do not have a school-issued device.
And they've used their own, so they've.
They have.
Been able to get educated at home.
Yeah.
If not tested.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any other questions from that?
Okay.
Great, thank you. Next item.
Okay, dues and fees are the last series, and they account for, this accounts for 0.36% of the total budget with an 11.2% increase over the 2020, 2021 budget. As I highlighted and spoke even, I spoke earlier about equity enhancements. This includes two equity enhancements and really is the reason for the increase, and that is our partnership with equal opportunity schools, as well as scheduling software from DM Group.
Questions? All right, seeing none.
Time's up.
Perfect timing, isn't it? Okay, no questions there. What else do you have for us?
We could talk about capital, other than, I know we already met about capital, but that would really be the, you know, our full operating budget. We've gone through all this.
General questions on the full operating budget?
Okay.
For the council. Questions, comments? We've gone through the entire operating budget. Again, the budget was a 4.3% increase. You've just heard each of the different line items that brings us to that point. So any questions in the council? Seeing none. They're going to leave if you don't have any questions. Okay, I'll just have a, a comment then if there are no questions from anyone else here. You know, we had set, and we've had this discussion before, we set a 3% target for a very specific reason. We are all looking at the elephant in the room, if it were, of the high school building project. All the numbers that we went through and worked out and calculated so we, as the financial body in town, could feel comfortable with affording that as a town, were based on a 3%. That was the reasoning behind the 3%. I think we'd still like to see how you can work to get us to that 3%. Keeping in mind, it is an unusual year. There are a few, the two biggest issues are COVID and the racial equity task force that we created that we have committed to funding. So we'd like to see you try and go back with the board and see how you can get us to those numbers so when we're going forward and going to referendum in early June, we can follow through on what we've all committed to do and keep to that 3%. So it's, I think it's certainly a big ask, but it's keeping with our five- and 10-year averages. We've always been, for our Board of Education, increases. 2.9, I think, is the five-year, 3.06 is the 10-year. So we've done a tremendous job, the Board of Education has done a tremendous job in working very good budgets, which are not onerous to the town. In this year, more than any other year, I think it's critical that we carry on doing that. So that's what I'd like to see and leave you all with, unless there are any other comments. Seeing none. We thank you ever so much for coming in. It was a nice sunny day. We wish we could have been outside, but maybe tomorrow.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, CJ.
Thank you. We'll take a very brief break while we wait for the town manager to come back down, and we clean all our surfaces properly. All right, we're back. Thank you all. And as the Board of Education was leaving, and I'm sorry you were all off the air when we asked, we're requesting them to return on Saturday when they meet with their group and to bring us back hopefully new and updated numbers so we can get closer to our targets. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Blonsky, who will be touching on the general administration accounts.
Right, so everyone, we're working off of the budget books, so if everyone gets the budget books. And Paula, just procedurally, just so I remember, I'm going to give Peter the page numbers. He should make a motion to TA first, and then we discuss it. Is that how we usually do it?
Usually after, you're TA after.
TA after, okay. So it's the first group, yellow, general administration. It's pages, budget pages 1 through 25. And those are the general administration group of accounts. It's finance, town council, legal, town clerk, economic development. So it's the general group of accounts. It's budget pages 1 through 25. And the first thing I just wanted to note, if you notice on page, the first page of it, it gives the departments, and it also gives the percentage change. And you can see that this account has a 9.10% change. What is driven there is the personnel services, and on the personnel services, what we stated earlier is that this includes all the salaries for all the employees except for step increases because all our contracts aren't settled yet, so they all get lumped into the personnel account. And then when the accounts get settled, when the union contracts get settled, we move them all into the various accounts. move them all into the, the various accounts. So, because we don't have contracts and we don't know what the accounts are, you, all the, uh, salaries are on personnel, and you'll find later on in some of these accounts that have salaries, you'll notice that those accounts are probably his, much lower than usual because you're not getting the cost of living salary in that specific account. You're only getting a step and inc, step increase, and if no one in your unit has a step increase, there's no salary adjustment in the individual accounts. So, other than that, in this account
Kathy?
Sure.
Question, I mean, you know, the board, we staggered them. You do them all at once, what are the general contract terms for all the units? I mean, is it, they all, three years or?
We had, did we, did we do, we were staggered, but because we pushed one year, right?
Historically, we've been staggered, um, but di- different things like one-year contracts, things like that, unfortunately, it has put them all together. And we'll work probably in the future to, to stagger again.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, like, logistically, this happens every third year, this kind of accounting piece?
It, it always happens, now, this is somewhat unusual because there are all four of them in there. We usually have some in and some that aren't settled, but this is somewhat unusual because it's all four, and we historically don't like to settle, go all four at a time. Um, there is, the library budget is in here, and I, just to let you know, is that, again, we give a grant to the library, but it is a 3% increase above the current budget levels. One of the things are, the library will be coming back, so they'll give you the detail of the library. So we'll just, we'll, we'll TA them again when they come back. Um, one thing that I think is interesting to note is it has to do with the library, and this is, there's a couple of other positions that are like this, is that our custodian in the past has been funded partially by the library. We were able to share some services and it was 25% um, that would be paid by the library. And basically, and I think it was more driven through the library, not through the town, that that was not enough, um, custodian service for them. So they basically now have, I think, their own full-time custodian, and they're not paying for our custodian, which actually, in reality, does work better for us too because I think our custodian was, um, there's just too much between the two buildings. So this account, um, for the custodian is 25% higher because his now, his full salary is in there instead of, uh, a portion of the salary. So that's, uh, and it's something. And the registrar voters' budget is, um, a little bit less, and that is because of last time, the presidential election is the most costly, um, area, and now it's just a municipal election, so it's, uh, not as much. So the budget pages are one through 25. That's kind of the highlights. It's really relatively flat. Um, if you have something on any of those pages, I'd be more than happy to try to answer it for you.
Questions on those pages? Okay, and just to reiterate, uh, for anyone looking through the book, the personnel, uh, services, that is a very high increase, is a catch-all for all the contracts that are being negotiated this year. Uh, that could be potentially split up amongst all the different contracts that are very low increases. Uh, so that comes out with that 9.1% overall increase.
Right.
Due to negotiations.
Correct, and that is on page 11.
Yep. Other question? Okay, next.
That would be a TA for Peter.
Peter?
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to TA pages one through 25.
Tentatively approve for those outside of this room.
Got it. Uh, I make a motion to tentatively approve pages one through 25 of the town's operating budget.
Joe Capitferro, second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
And, and just, again, a reminder that the library will be coming, I thi, tomorrow, and they'll go into detail about their library budget.
Yes, and again, for the listening public, when we tentatively approve these, we come back to them all on our final day, which may well be Saturday to finalize the budget for a final approval.
Right. All right, the next, uh, account is going to be, um, Joe, the, which one is it? The, in the back of the book?
Page is 69.
Can you say it louder?
Uh, this is the refuse budget, page 69 to 71.
Okay, thanks.
The refuse budget, which is the brown tab, okay.
All right. So, is everyone on, uh, page 69? So, "The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by our town residents and the town landfill operation. The budget proposes a rate increase of $19, and the annual fee is $2, $254 per year." I'm going to ask Joe to kind of go through it. It's, this is separate from the regular budget. You bring in the revenues and it, and the expenditures, and they match, so that's on the page, next to page 60, it's the first page of it. So, Joe, if you want to maybe start there?
Okay, Kathy mentioned, um, this is, this is actually three functions of, of, of collection. One, we do the, the infill, which is, um, you know, the transfer station, the brush, uh, stationed up at the mead. We also do the collection and disposal of, of household waste, uh, municipal solid waste, and then we have the hazardous waste collection, which we do twice a year. We have the consortium with the, uh, other valley towns, where, where we could do the, um, drop-off of hazardous waste. Um, as you pointed out on that first page, the summary page, looking at the revenues and the appropriations, we can go into the detail on each one if you'd like. Couple of things to point out, the landfill is relatively flat from, from the current year. We, um, we are experiencing some increases there, but we do have some offsets, so we ran into a little bit of a problem. There's, thanks to the storm, tropical storm last year, there, we used to have a good product with our wood chips and our brush, and we'd, we'd have, um, a private contractor haul it away. Uh, with the tropical storm last year, there was an, uh, an overflow of brush and there wasn't a market to sell it, so that kind of hurt us and raised our, our costs there. The collection and disposal is where the biggest increase comes and switch, the biggest driver, the two, uh, big drivers is one, our contract with our private hauler for collection, and we're projecting a, a cost increase for that, um, that vendor next year. And then the biggest driver is, is tip fees, and you can see that on page 70, um, that there's a line called tip fees, and you see that's going up over almost, uh, almost $100,000. It's been driven by two factors. And if you've been following what's going on in the newspapers, MyRMA, which is the, uh, where we, the regionalist, um, authority where we dump our trash and they currently burn it, um, their plant is rapidly deteriorating and going obsolete, and the, the, um, state is deciding what to do with, how they're going to dispose of trash in the future. As a result, um, they're actually looking at sending that trash out of state instead of burning it once the plant is no longer usable. So they've been gradually increasing their tip fees, and right now, we're, to give you an idea of the increase that we're looking at next year, right now, we're paying $91 per ton, um, to the, to dump at the, at the plant. Next year, that's going up by $14 to $105. So it's $105 per ton, and we had, we had it built into next year's budget. The second, um, driver in, in tip fees is, is an increase in tonnage. After many years of seeing a steady decline in our tonnage, our tonnage last year when the pandemic hit, more people were staying home, our tonnage in the last four months of the year, uh, of last fiscal year jumped dramatically, and it's currently, um, that increase is, is even got, um, greater than this past year. Currently, we're about 9% and our tonnage is 9% higher than it was at the same time last year. So the tonnage is going up, we're, we're doing about, we're projecting that this year will be about six, uh, 6,400 tons. Last year, we were at, we were averaging about, uh, 57, 5,700 tons. So it's, the tonnage increase is also driving up those costs. And then, um, and finally, we have our hazardous waste, and that's, um, we're projecting to be flat for next year. That, again, is that consortium with Simsbury-Grambi, East Granby. It's been working out very well for us, um, and that actually is something, you know, the town took the initiative to join that group. Prior to that, we were using the MDC's hat, hazardous waste collection, and if we had continued with the MDC, that number that you're looking at for next year, 44,000, would be probably closer to $80,000. So we, we've, uh, recognized some significant cost savings by going with the regional, the local regional group. Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, Joe, um, thanks for all of that, uh, provided a lot of great detail there in terms of, um, uh, the tip fees and, and how that's, um, uh, being impacted by, by COVID and other factors. Uh, and you, you mentioned the, the waste burning plant, the MyRMA fee. Are, are the fees increasing to cover, i- is the idea that they're trying to cover the anticipated cost of shutting down that plant a- and that's part of the fee increase, or is it just more of a general fee increase?
Um, it's a combination of the two. One is the, they need the money to continue to run the plant and, uh, to put, you know, the maintenance into the plant to keep it going for the next couple of years. And two, they're also planning on their shutdown and, and, and their transition to, um, basically creating a transfer station somewhere in this region, which will then, where everybody will bring their trash, and then they are, will be called out to, uh, probably to someplace in the Midwest or Southwest, uh, for disposal. So they're, they're building, it's a combination of the two, uh, two features. If you remember, about two years ago, the plant actually crashed and they could not use the plant. And at that time, the fee went up, um, they said it was a temporary fee, it never went down, but, um, you know, the last few months of the, of one fiscal year, the fee went up about $8, just to keep the plant going, get the plant back in operation and going. So they're planning for that, you know, to, to keep the plant going, um, and then also to address the, the need for, um, transitioning to, to being basically a transfer station.
And, um, I, I don't know if you know this, but do you know, you know, in the future, when it, the plant does shut down and we're sending all our tran, all our waste, uh, to that transfer facility, um, is that going to be significantly more expensive than the cost of sending it to the, the plant to burn it as, that we have today?
Yeah, I, um, the forecast that we've seen, uh, basically indicate that by 2023, the tip fee will probably be in the neighborhood of $135 to $140 per ton. So in 2024 is probably when you start to see the waste being trans, uh, transported out of state. So, you know, because again, you're going to be talking at that point about one, having a place here for storage, two, hauling it, and three, disposing of it wherever it's going. So realistically, probably by 24, you're, you're looking at $135, $140 per ton.
Oh, wow. Interesting, thanks, uh, for that additional information.
And Joe, that's been an ongoing problem, as you well know. I mean, speaking with the Farmington Valley Coalition, the CROG Group, uh, this is always a topic of discussion because the plant, as it's getting older and has a very limited life, we know anywhere you're going is going to be substantially more expensive, so we're just endlessly trying to seek out the best, most economical solution, but there aren't too many options right now.
All right, and
Any other questions for Joe?
And CJ, just a, one other thing too, is that the governor and the DEP, they have a, a large committee that we've been participating in because it is a, a huge statewide issue about, you know, a regional issue, and that we have been just so, you know, that, um, Russ, uh, is part of that group, and we have been participating on it, and there's a lot of different initiatives that, um, they're pushing out and looking at, whether it's pay-as-you-go kind of trash bags, um, extra recycling, there's different things that this whole coalition is trying to work on to kind, have less trash and things of that nature. So we have been following it closely, and as you know, and it is a big topic, um, for the CROG and for, uh, for everyone, so, um, but we are participating with the rest of the region in this.
And that, I'm sorry, Kathy just got my, my memory or something else. The, um, recycling, we do, we do not pay for recycling. We do bring all recyclables to MyRMA, and they process them, but the problem with recycling right now is there isn't a market. So a lot of the recycling, recyclables are not being recycled, they're being stored at the MyRMA plant or at their recycling facility until there, a market does come around again for that, and, and that's also built in, um, into the tip fee, their ability to sort, you know, keep the recycling program going at this time. So you're actually paying for the recycling program through the tip fee cost.
That's a good point. One of the other things that, uh, we've seen, and we've, uh, the Green Efforts Committee's been very good trying to encourage people, uh, through things like composting. That's less, uh, less trash that is being hauled away, so that's a positive. Uh, we have alternate pickups for, uh, textile recycling that stays out of that. So anything you can keep out of the brown can is a positive for us.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's, that's it with, um, the refuse and collection. Again, it's a $19 rate increase for over the year, and it comes to $254 per household. And those budget pages, Peter, are pages 69 through 71.
I make a motion to tentatively approve pages 69 through 71 of the town side of the budget.
Joe Capitferro, second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
CJ, the one other item I thought maybe we could talk about if the council would like to is debt. We could go over the debt?
That'd be great.
Okay. And, let's see where that is.
The orange tab. Glad you didn't use the red tab.
Yep.
Page 68. Okay, and as you could see here, the, the debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term debt. The total recommended amount for next year is $8,42,347. This is a decrease of $435, uh, and one, uh, 435,102, or 4.92% less than the previous year. And Joe, maybe if you want to go through it in detail on page 68, just to talk about that?
Sure. I'm just going to do a little bit by some of these lines that you see here on page 68. And contractual services is basically what the, where we budget the fees for issuing debt. And, um, it's our bond council fees, our fiscal advisory fees, the, the various costs that we, we incur whenever we issue debt. That it does have an increase for next year, um, and the reason for the increase is anticipating that the high school bond passes. We would look to do, again, based on the forecast that I provided, uh, last month, we would look to do a bond sale probably in January of 2022, so that we need that, um, approximately $225,000 for the, for that sale that would occur. So that's why you see the increase there. The lease financing, that makes up two, uh, lease, leases that the town has, long-term leases. One is for streetlights, and that's about $153,000 next year. And the other one is for the ESCO payment, that if you may recall, back in, uh, 2012, the town did, and the board did a collaborative, um, energy performance contract, and we paid for it through lease financing, and the town's share of that cost for next year is $87,000. So that makes up the 239. And then the bond interest, the bond principal and the CFW loans, um, you, you can see the schedules on the page opposite, on the left-hand side. That's all of our existing debt, um, principal, interest, plus the C, uh, CFW loans. The two new items there are the, um, well, actually, there's three new items. We did do a bond sale last September. We got a very good rate, it's a 15-year term. Uh, we got a 1.17% of rate, and we issued $4.6 million. So we'd be making the first principal and interest payments on that, that's an addition. And then there's two clean water fund loans, uh, that we closed on in July of last year. Those were the two loans for the, um, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and those were 2% loans, basically the state sets the rate at 2%. And, you know, when the state first set up the clean waterfront program, a 2% loan was a great deal. Uh, as you can see, it's not so, such a great deal anymore, or wasn't such a great deal, um, up until the past month or so. But, um, we did start, pick up two new loans. They totaled about 13 million dol, um, yeah, $13 million. So, um, we, we have to start paying those off. Now, those clean water fund loans, we do get an offset, you'll see on the revenue side of the budget. We do charge the other towns, assess them for a, a portion of these loan payments. It's sort of tune of about 850, 860,000 dollars a year. So that helped, they help offset that debt service cost on the revenue side. That's pretty much it. There's nothing built in here for any type of new, um, issuance for next year, figuring that if we do issue, it would be in January of next year, which means that the debt service payments wouldn't start until the following year, the 22, 23 year. So I did not build So it did not build in any new interest charges, did not build in any new principal charges for next year. Debt did drop off. We have one of our, one of our issues did drop off, one of our older issues. And our next big drop-off will take place in 22, 23. You will see, you'll see the size will drop off at that time and almost, again, if you're referring back to the financial forecast, I believe one point two million dollars will drop off at that time. Again, if anybody has any questions?
CJ, maybe if I could add is that, you know, Joe and our financial people really work very hard to manage our debt. And, you know, I think with the high school coming up, and we've talked about it when we did all our forecasting, we really positioned ourselves, I think, in a very good spot right now with our old treatment plant debt all coming off. And how we've managed the different debt is that we do have the capacity, you know, for the high school. And when we went through the forecast and, you know, it's, it's nice this year, too, that we have a reduction of the four hundred thousand dollars in debt. So Joe, I know, and his group and the finance people, they spend a lot of time reviewing the debt and making sure that, you know, we have capacity and we, as Joe always, Joe always says, is to try to keep it flat, that we don't keep on going like this. So that's it.
Thank you for that. And that's, you know, Joe, over these past years, when we've had historically low rates, I mean, Joe's done a great job of refinancing wherever possible to bring down our cost of debt. But compared to a few years ago, when we were talking about a building project, we have had a substantial amount of debt coming off the rolls. And as Joe said, another 2022 to 2023, another one point two coming off. That all sets us up to be in a much better position for digesting a large amount of debt. So that's a positive. Any other questions for Joe on debt?
I got one.
Yes.
Joe, on the contractual services, like for the sewer treatment plant, did the surrounding towns that, who used the facility, did they pay into part of those fees also?
They pay into the costs, what we do, we gather all the costs that were incurred for the project. And then we portion them out based on each town's usage of the, of the plant. So they, yes, there's authorities or yes, they'll pay for those cost costs.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
Other questions for Joe on the debt? Just one question for me, Joe. The contractual services that we have potentially, if the referendum passes, would those end up just being straight payments or would those roll into any debt that we issue? Or is that just cash we pay?
It would be, it would be straight payments. But what happened is after the debt's issued, the various parties that are involved in the debt issuance would send us invoices and we would just pay them out of this account. So there's, you know, there's a lot, people do it both ways, to be honest with you. Some, some communities will fold in the issuance into their debt. And some will pay for it like we pay for it, but they'll pay for it upfront out of their operating budget. The philosophy has always been that, you know, you want to, at least my philosophy has always been with this, is that you want to pay for the debt as you're using the asset. And I'm not really sure that the debt issuance or the cost are really become a viable asset. You know, basically, you're using the person one time for a debt sale. And so, and it's, it feels, you know, why would you add that back into your, your debt and pay interest on it for the next fifteen years? So, so we've, we've been paying for it upfront and not including getting the cost. A lot of times you'll see in the bond resolutions, what'll, it'll say you could pay for the issuance cost, but our practice has been not to do that.
Great, thank you. And I think that's wise practice. We don't need to make that number grow over the years of the debt where we'd be paying interest on that number.
Well, it also, you know, you think about it, if you're, if you're authorizing a million dollars for a project and then you say you could use the issuance, you could pay for the issuance out of that bond issue, that's less money that you then take, you know, you're truly not authorizing a million dollars then, you're authorizing a million dollars less your bond issue, your debt issuance cost. So the full bond authorization is not going towards your project. You know, it's going, it's going towards, you know, part of it's going towards debt issuance, that's, that much you take away from it. So, so again, you know, it's, it's just, you know, the idea that we issued the debt for what we, for the, for the long-term asset that we're, that we're focused on.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions for you?
Yep. Just one quick question on the 2013 refunding bond on page sixty-seven. I noticed there's no principal payment there, just interest payment. Is that part of the terms of, of that bond or can you collaborate on that?
Sure. What we did in that one is a lot of these refinancings, what you do is you cherry pick, use a slang term, you cherry pick what you refinance. So you may have an issue, basically what happens with a bond issue is, then when we say, well, we had a bond issue and it had a two point two, three percent interest rate, that's the overall interest rate. It's called the true interest, interest cost. Each year will usually have a different interest rate. So, and depending upon how the underwriter wants to structure it, they'll basically, they'll give you an interest rate for each year of the bond. So it's a fifteen-year bond, you're going to, you could potentially have fifteen different interest rates, one for each year. So what we do is we call cherry picking. Sometimes you'll get a bond where in year five, it's a five percent interest rate for that one year, or it's a three percent interest rate for the following year. So we look at those and wherever we could refinance those to bring the term down, we refinance those. And at the time that we do that, we also restructure the debt to fit into, what we did is we restructured a lot of our debt to fit into where we had drop-offs. So that two, 2013, that particular, where there's no principal payment next year, we'll start picking them up again in, in out-years. I think we actually go two years with no principal payment and then after that, we start to pick them up again. But as part of our whole strategy of slotting in principal payments and slotting in debt to fit where we had peaks and valleys. Now, again, we wanted to smooth the debt out, so we had a valleys, we, or we had a peak and we said, okay, we're not going to issue here, we're not going to have a principal payment here, we'll have a principal payment two years out or something like that where we have a, where we have a valley. So we just try to smooth it out that way.
And do you have to, can you, can you, is that something you can do on an ongoing basis or you have to determine that at the, at the time when you issue the bond?
No, you do that at the time you're issuing the bonds.
Okay.
So, so again, we cherry picked, we identified what were good candidates for refinancing. We take those candidates and then we slot them out. The only rule that we have really to follow is we do not extend the term. And so that's also somewhat of a constraint. So, so if you have a bond issue that's going to mature in five years and you want to refinance, we're not going to refinance it for seven years, we're just going to refinance for the five years. But again, we're going to, we're going to slide it into where we could see drop-offs and potentially have drop-offs.
That makes sense. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, one question. Based on, on that, I'm just curious to see if you see any other opportunities here to do something similar to reduce our debt and keep things level as we look forward.
There's a couple of things that, there is one opportunity and it's, it's something that, it's not really feasible at this time. Some of this debt's going to drop off in the next few years, so it's not worth refinancing at this point because you're paying the lower interest rate, you know, the lower interest on it. Some of it, it, some of it's not callable yet. Debt has to be, you can only refinance debt when it's callable. One of our problems is prior to the, what was it, 2017 or 2018 tax, tax changes, federal tax changes, we had something called the ability to advance refund our debt. And what that meant was that you may have debt that was not callable immediately, but you could still issue debt to, against that debt, put it in escrow, buy slugs or treasuries and based on the interest earned on the slugs, based on what you've issued, you could then put it in escrow. And then when it comes due in five years, you have enough money to pay off the old debt. But in the meantime, your active debt is mu, is at a much lower rate. So it's called, it was called advanced refunding. That was done away with in the latest tax law changes a couple of years ago. There is some effort at the federal level to bring that back. Matter of fact, the bill has been introduced in Congress to allow us to continue to do that or to start, resume doing that. So if that's the case, then some of this debt would be a good candidate for refinancing. The one really good candidate we had up until a few months ago was the clean water fund loans. Even though, as I mentioned before, two percent was, it looks like a great deal. If you look at the 2020 bond issue last year, fifteen years at one point one seven percent, it was considerably lower than the two percent. And we were looking at the opportunity to refinance, especially that 2018 clean water fund loan. We thought if we can get that down below. Our problem is the last clean water fund loan, loan there, that clean water fund loan, number two, that's blocking us because that's backed by the special revenue of the clean, of the water pollution control facility. So in order for us to refinance any of the, the other loans, we have to pay that loan off in full. And we don't, obviously, we don't have the ability to do that. So that's, that's basically blocking us from refinancing any of the clean water fund loans. Right now, it's probably moot because the rates have been creeping up, so we probably wouldn't get that spread that we need to, that saving spread that we need to make it worth our while.
Okay, well, thank you for being vigilant.
Joe?
Yes, this one about the fund balance.
What about the fund balance?
Does it, favorable for us going out, possibly not for a school referendum, to keep X amount of dollars in there? So when we do go out to bond, we're, we're in a better position when we market?
Yeah, I think. Fund balance is the political football, right? There's a couple of, there's a lot of variables with fund balance you have to remember. You know, and it's a little frustrating because every time you think you're at a good fund balance level, you know, the, the people who establish what's a good fund balance level, they'll tend to shift it and raise it higher. So we're currently around fourteen percent. Our fund balance is roughly fourteen percent of our current year operating budget. If you pass the town manager's recommended budget, as, as is, that's a hundred and eighteen million dollars, your fund balance next year will be under, it'll be like thirteen point six percent. So, so don't forget, you know, as you change the operating budget, if your fund balance is stagnant, your percentage is going to go down. It has to go down. The rating agencies are right now, you know, they have always said, you know, years ago, when they first started doing this, it was like, oh, you need eight to ten percent. Then it was, no, you need eight to twelve percent. Then it was, no, you need twelve to fifteen percent. You know, if I were to go with them tomorrow, they'd say, you know what, you need fifteen to twenty percent. I think where you're at is fourteen percent is probably optimal, is probably good. It's below where the median is in the country, and which is unfair, it's an unfair statistic. But when you look at the AAA ratings in Connecticut, we're probably the lowest fund balance out of anybody. And so, I mean, our fund balance is solid, but it is one of the lowest. There's a lot of triple As out there at twenty percent in the state of Connecticut. Do I think we should be at twenty percent? I'd love to be, but I don't think it's realistic, you know? I think fourteen percent is good and I think we can make a good argument that fourteen percent is good and that we steadily build our fund balance. And that's one of our keys with the town of Farmington, and that's why we do get the AAA, even though the fund balance is a low number, is we don't use the fund balance to just every year appropriate it and take it and use it for lowering the tax rate or things like that. We're very judicious in our use of fund balance. And they reckon, and they recognize that. They recognize that we're not, you know, every year taking it, we're not building, we're not building gaps in our, in our budget every year by taking it. You know, they're towns, so if you take a million dollars from fund balance this year, what are you going to do next year? Either you're going to take another million dollars from fund balance or you're going to raise taxes next year to make up that million-dollar shortfall. Because a fund balance appropriation, as a rule, is a one-time revenue. You know, you use it, you, you can only use it once unless you have a surplus again the following year of a million dollars where you could reuse it again. It's, it's a one-time revenue. So I think in our case, a reliance on, our non-reliance on fund balance as a, as a ways of keeping the taxes low is a positive in our favor. That doesn't mean you can't take some fund balance on occasion. We took fund balance two, last year, we appropriated fund balance, almost a million dollars in fund balance. We were fortunate we didn't use it, but, but we did appropriate it. And when we went to the rating agencies, they did question, you know, why are you using fund balance? We explained to them the purpose of it and they were fine with that. So again, it's, it's, it, the warning flag would be, becomes a reliance on fund balance. If you take a million this year and you say, well, I'm going to take another million next year, then, then the flags come up. So, and I think you really need to stay, especially going into the possibility of a large, you know, several years of large bond issues, I think you really need to show a commitment to like a fourteen percent of fund balance. You know, again, you don't have to go to the fifteen or twenty percent, but I think you need to show a commitment that you're willing to raise taxes or, or find, you know, reliable, sustainable revenue sources to fund your debt and your operations without continually going after fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Just one more question. Now, let me know if this is not the appropriate time to talk about this, but since we're talking about the money that we've saved, is this, or if you're going to talk about it later, we'll talk about it later, but can we talk a little bit about our income and how Farmington is positioned right now in terms of, given where we are with the state of the economy and COVID, how are we doing on the income side? Or are you going to talk about it later? I just wanted to.
Eventually, we will talk about, we'll talk about revenues.
Okay, we'll talk about it later.
Probably better to talk about it with revenues.
I think we should talk about it with the revenue side.
Right.
Okay.
You spread it out too much, we're just going to confuse the public.
Right.
In the interest of transparency, we should keep it all on the same page.
Yeah. Well, this is definitely the debt, this is the debt side, and we will definitely talk about that side of it.
At some point.
Okay.
Okay.
So Peter, we're on page sixty-seven, I mean sixty-eight, apology for a.
Are there any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay. I make a motion to tentatively approve page sixty-eight debt service to the town side of the budget.
Joe Capitfarrell, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
And CJ, just again, we, we're going to be talking about it more as we get into it, but on the front page, we refer to it as our tax and budget worksheet. That's, you know, that's the tax and budget worksheet, and I just want to make sure everyone sees the third item down, that's the debt service. And that's the eight million, four hundred and two thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars with the reduction of four thirty-five. Just so that, that is where that is on the, on this page. So that's the item that we have taken. CJ, we, that's all we have for today. The thought was for tomorrow, we'd start at four o'clock and we'd have, we'd talk about the registrar voters, we'd have, we're going to have the police department come in, the public works department come in, our fire and rescue.
We skipped dinner.
Oh, and dinner?
Sorry.
Economic development, the library, community and recreation. We've gone through the general government accounts and I'm hopeful, and we've, since we've hit the general government and the debt, that potentially we could do the revenues tomorrow, too. And then if we, I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do the revenues tomorrow and everything on our sheet, we've gone through everything. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That would be correct. And then that would position us on Saturday to really kind of just talk about the whole picture. We would have gone through everything. So I think our goal should be for tomorrow is to get through what's on the list and get through revenues.
Absolutely. That sounds like a good plan.
And that's it.
Any further questions for Captain? Okay. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I will leave you with our quote for the evening. You can't go back and change the beginning, but you can start where you are and change the ending. C.S. Lewis with that, Peter.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March tenth, 2021 town council meeting.
Joe Capitfarrell, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
Nice job, everyone.